Let me hit live here. Go for it.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. It is seven o'clock on June the seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. And this is a business meeting of the state and city council. Uh, I'm Mayor Hank Porter and everyone that needs to be here apparently is. And so Alyssa, let's go ahead with the public comment, please.
All right. First up, we have Aaron Frickel. I'm gonna go ahead and let him go. Aaron, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and I will start the timer once you're done with that.
Okay, uh, my name is Aaron Frickel. I live at one, two, three, two, six Gulf Lane Southeast Sublimity, Oregon. Have a building downtown as well, uh, down near the police station and, uh, uh, let me see, is that all I needed to do there?
Um, yes.
Okay, so my public comment is, um, with, uh, I'm talking on behalf of, uh, the interest that, uh, we had in making a, an art project downtown. Uh, it's been a process that's been going on for over a year and, uh, prior to COVID hitting, uh, I met with, uh, with another RDS member at the time and, uh, we were talking with Keith, uh, city manager about, uh, the potential putting, uh, artwork downtown that would be kind of fun and, and, uh, kind of family oriented, uh, so that people, when they're walking downtown, they could see a little, a little character, uh, painted by a local artist named Nathan, uh, Brown, who's downtown there. And, um, it's been a process that's been going on for a very, very long time. We went through all the hoops, uh, that we were told that we needed to do. And then, um, for some reason, um, well, there was a, a plan by, uh, to put us, uh, an arts council in place. And so we've been waiting for that to happen and we're kind of unsure of what's happening with that. Uh, it doesn't seem like it, it's progressing and, uh, and as far as I know, the, uh, the Arts Commission would be only an advisory, uh, committee and that the city council would still be voting on the, the artwork that would be displayed in the downtown core. And so I'm just wondering if we can, uh, sidestep this Arts Commission and realize that the original plan of, of talking to the council about these art projects and getting it going. So that's what my main comment is.
Yeah. Thank you, Aaron.
Okay.
All right. Next up, we have Steve Poisson from, um, RDS. And there he is. Um, Steve, go ahead and state your name and address for the record. And once you're done with that, I'll start the timer.
Okay. Uh, my name is Steve Poisson. I live at seventeen fifty East Pine Street. President of RDS. I'm here for.
Steve, I'm sorry, you got muted. Some of the, I was trying to mute someone that was talking and it muted you. And it wasn't you that was, shouldn't be talking. There you go. Go ahead.
Back now?
Yes, you're good to go.
Did you get the address and all that?
Yes, yeah, we're good, we're good.
Okay. Uh, I am here for the fourth or fifth time since April, I think, when we first requested that you approve our plan for sidewalk art. This is a project that a group of volunteer citizens developed the concept. We polled citizens through Facebook and got very positive response. Uh, we raised the funds required to hire an artist and did so. We hired Nathan Brown, who's a local artist and businessman. Uh, got the permission of businesses and building owners as we were told to do by the city manager. And then submitted a complete package for your approval. I find it hard to believe that volunteers should find it this difficult to get the city's cooperation in implementing such a project when it's just improving the city. Um, I hope you will take action on this issue today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
All right. Next up, we have Candy Schuff. I don't know if I'm gonna say it right there. We'll let her pop on and correct me. Let's see if she's here. Let me see if we get her on here. Where'd she go? I'm not seeing her anymore. She was here. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next one, which, um, is Julie Boxler. See, see her. Let me see if I can get her to pop on here. Here she comes. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
Hi.
Julie Boxler, sixteen, six.
You got it. You know what to do. Go ahead.
I do. Julie Boxler, sixteen sixty, uh, Mount Jefferson Drive. I just want to thank the city council for all of your volunteer time that you have put into helping our city. Um, we have four RDS volunteers here tonight as well, who want to help improve, uh, basically the historic downtown. I don't know if you know what RDS does, but we have done the benches and the parklet. We've done banners, uh, the Walk of Hearts, historic plaques, wayfinding signs. And then events such as the concerts, the ghost tour, Farmer's Market, that is starting at this late in June on Wednesdays from three PM to seven PM with over sixteen vendors. So we hope you will all come and visit the RDS Farmer's Market at the corner of Third and Florence on Wednesdays for the summer. Um, but one thing that we've had on our agenda for over a year is the sidewalk art. And it's been presented to the city administration and, um, I think the city council, and we would love it if you would get it on your agenda to vote on so that we could do the sidewalk art that has been in the works um, to help improve just a little bit of fun and, um, silliness kind of to the downtown. Maybe make it a sweeter place for kids to come and check out the sidewalk art. So we hope you'll put it on your agenda. Not wait for the Arts Commission and vote on it, uh, and get us an approval for sidewalk art. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it. Okay. Alyssa, have you got someone else?
No, that is it. Um, she saw, she was here and when I went to, um, have her speak, she disappeared. So I'm not sure what happened. But we, uh, that was it. That would be it for public comment, other than we did receive the one written comment um, from John Moni, which has been posted on the city's website.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you, everyone, that, uh, made the effort to, uh, come and, and testify tonight on that. So moving right along, a consent agenda for May seventeen. Could we get some action on that, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second, please?
A second.
All right, thank you. And so Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Absolutely. Counselor Mullen.
Yes.
Counselor Patty.
Yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Counselor Ort.
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. And there's my timer I didn't turn off. Just in case maybe I'm wondering.
Alyssa?
Yes.
This, this is Lance. I just wanna jump in real quick. I, I'm sure you see it and I'm probably way out in the dark here, but there is a person on there by the name of Alyssa Russell. Is she part of the next hearing or something?
She's part of the public hearing, yeah.
All right, very good. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the person you were looking for.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, hidden voice in the background. Okay, uh, let's go to a public hearing tonight. Vacation of an alleyway. And as we start, I have to read the script, so bear with me, please. Good evening. My name is Henry Porter and Mayor, I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing on the matter of land use file five dash oh three slash twenty-one. I request to vacate the alley between North Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue running from East Elwood Street to East Robidoux Street. The hearing is now open. Okay, pump pump. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided for this hearing. And I don't hear any. Probably wouldn't in this format anyway. Uh, to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. And I, I don't hear any. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact or bias by any members of this body? And again, I hear none. If you are providing testimony during the public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction. And staff introduction. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public who are watching. Uh, the issue before the council this evening, as the opening statement, uh, said, is a public hearing on a request to vacate the alley that is between North Fifth Ave and North Sixth Ave and runs from Elwood to Ro, North to Robidoux. I will leave it at that and then be back with my staff report after the applicant's presentation.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So back to Alyssa, can you introduce, um, Ms. Russell, please?
Sure, um, I'll have, ask Alyssa Russell to go ahead and unmute and turn her camera on. I, I see she's here, so just give her a second. There she comes.
Is, is my video on? I, I don't know how I did that.
Let me, here, I just asked you to start it, see if that helps.
Okay.
There you go.
You got it.
All right, you're good to go.
Okay. Can you see me or mine? I, I don't have a video, just talking.
You're on. We see you.
Okay. Uh, yep, uh, my name's Alyssa and this is my husband, Patrick, and we are the applicants to, um, present to vacate the alley. Um, I'm not quite sure. We live at one, one, seven, seven, North Sixth Avenue. And yeah, so we had an application we filled out and
surveyed.
Yeah, we've had it surveyed now and we're splitting it in half with the Goodman, so.
We, we moved our fence and our
Yeah, the fence has moved and the shed has moved and everything else, so there's nothing in the area anymore.
Ms. Russell and Mr. Russell, what, what else do we need to know, um, about this application, um, other than you've done all the, the basics? The alley is split, uh, property owners on each side and that each end, uh, they're all okay with this. And, uh, all the
Yeah.
all the hurdles have jumped over, right? Does that sound?
Right, as, as far as, as far as we know.
Well, then, uh, is there anything else you'd, uh, like to throw in at this point?
Uh, us?
Yeah.
Uh, no, not really. We're just really hopeful that all this hard work will be paid off and the alley will be vacated.
Let's get some action on this thing, right?
Right.
All right. Let's, let's send it, uh, let's go back to staff report from Mr. Fleishman then.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you've got, uh, in your packet is the application that the Russells submitted. Uh, it includes the, uh, consent uh, of all of the owners of property adjacent to the alley, as is required by state law. It also includes, uh, the consent or signatures of the owners of two-thirds of what the statute calls the affected land, which is essentially the owners on the next block, north and south, uh, north of Robidoux and south of Elwood between Fifth and Sixth. And, um, th- this issue arose last December. Also in your packet is the letter that I sent to the Russells, uh, in December, when just as we, I was reviewing the newly acquired aerial photography that the city had received. Um, and being familiar with the two thousand and fourteen version of our aerial photography from working with it so much that, oh, look, there's a, there's a new fence and a shed in the alleyway. Um, what, what, how and when did that happen? Uh, so sent, uh, the letter to the Russells that is enclosed in your packet, uh, the result of which was they're requesting that the alley be vacated. State law, uh, says that the, essentially the criterion that is before you is to determine that the public interest will or will not be prejudiced by this action. And if you find that there will not, the public interest will not be prejudiced by vacating it, then, then, uh, you can vacate it. There are no publicly city-owned public facilities in the alley. There are no facilities of the private, um, franchise utilities. Uh, we, uh, request, uh, for comments were sent to Public Works, Police, School District, the private utilities, various county agencies, as I routinely do for any land use matter, uh, did not get any, uh, comments or concerns expressed, uh, and specifically reached out to both, uh, uh, SCTC and Wave Broadband because the information we had in our records indicated there was some telecommunication facility in the alley, but they both replied back, not us. So evidently our data was wrong. The, with, with the exception of the work that the Russells did to put in the fence and the, and the shed and, and whatever landscaping around it, uh, the alley is currently undeveloped. It cannot be used as a public thoroughfare. As I said, there are no public utilities in it. Um, on the south end of the alley, back about six years ago, uh, the city's Public Works Department had issued a encroachment permit when we discovered that there was a longstanding fence across the alley, that portion of the alley. Um, the south half of the alley is, uh, is lawn and maintained by, uh, the neighboring property owners. Um, so, um, with all of that, uh, the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendation following their public hearing was for the council to vacate the alley. Uh, we've received no, uh, opposition, uh, as a result of these proceedings. So with that, the staff recommendation is for the city council to vacate the alley. You've got, uh, a draft ordinance, uh, before you that will do so. So I'll, I can answer any questions, uh, if you have.
All right, thank you, Dan. Uh, let's go to questions from the council and see if there are any and, uh, who they might be addressing probably to you. So questions from the council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Um, Dan, I've, I've heard from the Russells that they've moved their, their fence and their, um, stuff they have from the alley. Um, it looks like, I'm looking at the, just the satellite image on Google Maps. And it looks like the property in the southwest corner of that block also has some fencing that would probably need to be moved. Um, has that been done or do we have anything from those residents?
Uh, we do, we do not, um, and, and yes, it, it, it may, but that will end up being between the two, the two owners on either side of the alley to work that out.
And the, the fact that the, the building there in that southwest corner is so close, the alley doesn't cause any problems or any issues there?
It's, it's from, from the city's, uh, imagery, it's hard, it, it does look very close. Um, you know, the image that I have at the bottom of, uh, the first page of the staff report, you can't rely on the tax maps and the aerial photography lining up exactly and also depending on, on whether the, the, the plane was to the east or the west of the building as it flies over will depend on which way the building appears to be quote leaning. Um, you know, so you can't, you can't rely on, on, on this image to determine that. Um, but you, but again, uh, under state law, when the city vacates a right-of-way, um, the land gets essentially split down the center of the light, right-of-way and goes to the owners of the property on either side. So, which is why the Russells ended up ha, moving their fence and shed because it would have been on the, the Goodman's property to the west of the alley, uh, had they not done so after the vacation.
Got you. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Other questions from the council? Let's go to persons in favor.
Let's see, I'll, I'll pop on here real quick. Um, we didn't receive any requests, um, to speak in favor this evening.
All right.
And, and if I may, there, there was only one other person speaking at the Pl- Planning Commission public hearing. Um, and there, it was Sharon Goodman, who owns the other side of the alley from the Russells. She did speak in favor at that time, but she isn't here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, stay there, Alyssa. We're going to persons opposed. Anything?
No, no, we did not receive anything.
Uh, other interested persons?
No, nothing there either, Mayor.
Okay. Back to questions from the council. Okay. Um, then back to you for a staff summary.
All right, I don't have anything else to add, but just run through the options that are provided to you in the staff report, uh, vacate the alley, adopting ordinance ten fifty as presented. Vacate the alley, but adopt the ordinance with some modification. Retain the alley is the third choice. You can also continue this evening's hearing until your next meeting. Or close the hearing and keep the record open. Or close the hearing and the record and not make, and continue your deliberations to the next meeting. Again, the staff recommendation and the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to vacate the alley and, and ordinance ten fifty is presented to you to do so.
All right, thank you. Clear directions. Lots of options on that one. Let's close the hearing then. Oh, if there's no objection and go to council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Counselor Patty, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready to close the hearing.
It's posed, but
Okay, all right. So I would like to move to approve ordinance number ten fifty as presented and vacate the alley.
Okay, thank you. Is there
Counselor, yeah, sorry. Uh, Counselor Hook seconds.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Counsel. Um, let's go then to a, um, council decision on ordinance ten fifty. Um, and we have a, a motion and a second to, uh, approve the vacation of that alley. So Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
And Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, there's a closing statement I need to make, uh, uh, following the public hearing. The council's decision may be appealed within twenty-one days of the mailing of the notice of decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals under the Oregon Revised Statute one nine seven point eight zero five dash eight five five. So that takes care of that one this evening. Uh, under general business, uh, temporary COVID nineteen public meeting procedures of staff report, it's an action item. Uh, who wants to carry this one tonight? Go ahead, Alyssa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. Um, before you, you have yet another revision to our temporary COVID nineteen public meeting procedures. As many of you know, staff has been working over the last couple of months to prepare to move into a hybrid type of council meeting that would allow staff members to, and council members to choose whether they are in person in the building or if they want to still zoom in. And we've been working to coordinate that with doing a live stream still, allowing for public comment to still happen, either in person, written, or doing, um, those, the virtual public testimony. And so the revisions before you are the step in moving forward to start having those virtual meetings. And, um, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Um, council discretion, go ahead. Uh, let's, uh, let's ask Alyssa questions about this, these new arrangements. Go ahead, somebody, anyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Ort.
Um, on
Sorry.
Just make sure it isn't somewhere else as well, but on number six, agenda update, some public participation in this. I feel like maybe I saw another place as well, what was this? Public comment. Uh, two I, written comment, strongly encourage that interested parties provide testimony in writing prior to the meeting and abstain from attending the meeting in person. I don't really care for that last, and abstain from the meeting, attending the meeting in person.
Which, which part was that? Cause it, I'm just wanna make sure I'm seeing it.
Um, it's six B.
Okay.
Two I, I don't know why you said that.
Oh, number one, okay. Yeah. Let's see, parties interested in providing. Is it the written?
It's the written comment. It says, I mean, I agree, we strongly encourage people to provide written testimony. I think that's important, um, but I don't want to discourage people coming.
Oh, yeah, that's just, that was missed. Yeah, we tried to catch all of those. But yeah, no, definitely, um, that would be something I would say, yeah, we'd want to, to update, um, cause they can, they can still come if they, um, it's just another manner of providing testimony.
Certainly, I just didn't, I didn't, I don't want to discourage people from
No, yeah.
coming in person. So then, um,
Same with probably on public hearing, right?
Yes, okay, so it's under the public hearing, so I knew it was in two places.
Yeah, cause those are pretty much the same. Okay, so we'll make that, as long as I'm, everybody is good with that, um, we'll make that edit to that, cause that was definitely not the intention and just something we missed in reviewing. So I'll take that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
A person would be discouraged from attending. All right, go ahead, Counselor, go ahead.
Um, okay, so on number two, it says as of this meeting, Marion County is in high-risk category capacity and the community center building is limited to fifty people. Um, so are we going to revisit this every time we move down or should this state something more like the community center capacity is limited to the amount of people? Um, I don't know how to word it, but limited to the amount of people.
Based on the risk level.
On the risk level instead, so that we don't have to keep
Mm-hmm.
um, coming back to it. And then it can be changed then, ri- right then, as opposed to us coming back and having to
Mm-hmm.
uh, update this and, and then allow more people in.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor, again, uh, the sound is, is bad on this end. What article were you referring to on that, please?
Uh, number two, public observation.
Okay, right, right, I see it.
I can, I'll speak louder, sorry. Mumbling a little bit.
No, it's fine, it's just, it might be the sound on this end, yeah, it's the it's a part they were taking out anyway, isn't it?
We can definitely make it more, I guess, general, um, and say based on the risk level Marion County is in at that time. Um, I can, I can craft some language that covers that. Maybe if that's what you guys are all thinking, you might wanna see.
I definitely chime in. If I'm the only person that feels that way, then that's fine.
Mr. Mayor? This is Counsel Patty.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would also go ahead and just make this a little easier on all of us and make it subject to the, whatever the county level is. I don't understand. I feel like that's a pretty easy change to make. It's not like we're changing the whole document. It's just that section and those other two segment, uh, excuse me, sections that discourage attendance if they've done, you know, written comment. So I, I mean, I don't think the whole document personally needs to be looked at for that kind of thing, but those three items that Counsel Ort has identified seem pretty important to be updated.
Well, otherwise we're revisiting the thing all the time.
Correct.
Every meeting, there's some little tinkering with that, with that document. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor Hook. I just have a question on, um, if there's a place that we could put in bold red or something on the website right near these rules of like what the county risk level is as of whatever day it is of, of the meeting. I, I don't know if that's too much work for staff or, um, just cause some people don't even know what level we're in.
Right. Well, and one thing we could do is put a link to, um, the state's website where they have those listed. So that way we're not having to go, remember to go in and update it. Um, but the link is there for them to go find out what the current county risk level is.
Alyssa?
Yeah.
Any more discussion tonight on this?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Go ahead, Chris.
It's a logistics question for Alyssa.
Sure.
I'm not sure what the distancing rule is right now. Is it three feet or is it six feet?
It's six feet still.
Okay, it's still six. So from a logistics perspective, if all the council members show up behind the dais, um, are we gonna be on one camera? Are we gonna pan the camera back like it normally is? Or are we ending on doing laptops for the individuals? Or what's, what's the plan?
So we have, um, done a completely different setup in the community center and I can try to explain it to you, but I'd also be happy to meet you over there at some point and just show it to you. We've, um, instead of using the dais, we've got tables set up, six foot tables. So each council member will have their own table to sit at. And then there'll be two staff tables where Keith and I will be. And the, the camera will, so we're, we're, instead of being on, in that tiny little skinny room that we were usually in, we flipped it. So where the big screen is on the wall, that's behind council members in the community center. And so you're looking back towards the kitchen when you're sitting there. And the room is opened up. No wall, um, is across there. And so it's allowed us to really space everything out and have audience members socially distanced and be able to film. And, um, what we're gonna do is still be using the Zoom platform for those who are not at the meeting. And the council will be on one of those, basically one of these Zoom windows that you're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And like I said, anybody who hasn't seen it yet, I know some of the council members have, um, Keith and I are happy to meet, meet with you guys, um, whenever you're available, just to kinda run down what it, what it looks like. Cause it is a big, um, change. But I think even going into the future, it's gonna give us all, um, it'll be, it'll just be a lot better logistically.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please. Counsel Patty?
Yeah, this is Counsel Patty. I, I really wanna go ahead and, and, uh, second what Alyssa just said. I had an opportunity a week and a half ago to, to go take a look at what the council chambers are gonna look like. And I gotta say, staff was really creative the way they set it up. And I think that this is gonna really facilitate a lot more, uh, public participation and engagement. So definitely take a look at that if you have a chance.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Hook.
Um, I also got a chance to go look at it and I just wanna thank the staff, uh, so much for finding a way to make it so that we can do both, not just, um, the online Zoom meetings anymore, but now go back into the in-person where people have been in the past the most comfortable while still allowing for the people that have gotten used to the idea of, um, being able to go up virtually. Um, still having that as an option. So thank you. It makes it more accessible and I'm a big fan of making things accessible and getting people in here to, to speak.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Someone else? Anyone else? So there's some changes noted. Is everyone, everyone's okay with those, I hope? Are we, uh, are we good to go on that? For now, at least? In the immediate future? Assume?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, here we go. Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, okay. So I know that the OSHA guidance and the guidance from the governor is that we can ask for vaccination cards in order for people not to wear masks. And I'm fully against that. Um, but I also think that Oregon is a little behind the times at the moment and the current CDC guidelines says that we don't have to mask indoors if people are vaccinated. And so I'd like to take that part out. I think that we can add them at a table and have the hand sanitizer, but people are probably spaced, and people that want the vaccination have either gotten it or have the ability to get it. So I don't think it's necessary.
I, I will chime in on that with OSHA, the, the, it's mandatory that we either ask to view the card or we go stricter and require masks.
Okay. So follow up to that. So if someone comes in and they're not wearing a mask, what are we gonna do?
Our hope is that we don't have to play the mask police. We will have masks available and we'll be asking everyone entering the building to wear a mask. And we will have signs posted.
Who's gonna be the one to tell them they have to leave?
It's asking, it's, no, I, I understand. It's, it's, uh, definitely a hard position to be put in. Um, and having to follow what the state's mandating and, right? We, we would have to enforce it, unfortunately.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, this is Counselor Hook. Um, I am not, uh, okay with us ever asking for, uh, vaccination cards. Um, I, I just don't think that that is necessary. I, I don't love the idea of requiring people to wear masks. Um, I believe that it is really important to get us in person though. And so if just a blanket masks required is what we have to do for a little bit until whatever metric it is that our governor thinks we need to meet, um, comes to fruition, then I, I just think that we, we should definitely follow guidelines so that we're not, um, in non-compliance and getting the city in trouble. Um, but keep really, it seems like the city's keeping really on top of where we're at with these rules and guidelines. And as soon as they change those, we can lift the masks. And we should do that as soon as, as soon as it happens, not wait to, to come to a council meeting and have to go out weeks, uh, even more weeks of getting council approval. So whatever we have to do to make sure that that can just happen, um, when those things change, I'm all for that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Alyssa, it might be helpful for us to understand what was to, what would the city's liability or position be if we did permit folks to come in without masks, without checking vaccination cards? Could you kind of explain what the liability to the city is?
Well, it, there's, there's a lot of things. The biggest one would be just with like any business getting reported to OSHA and facing potential fines for not following, um, what the state guidelines are currently.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Ben.
Uh, I just wanted to point out, I don't know if everybody saw the email that, that went out today from, uh, OHA that we are 107,000 vaccinations away from the, all the mandates being removed. Um, that's likely gonna happen before the next meeting. If not then, then certainly up till the next one. Um, so this may all be a moot point by then. Um, that's all. Like I said, we're, we're at 68 point something percent vaccinated right now. And that's 70% is where, where the governor is, has said that she's gonna remove the restrictions. So, um, well, this may be for not.
What are the numbers, Ben? We need what, 120, 130,000?
107,000, which is, it's about, at the current pace, it's about a week.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Hook.
Yeah, this is Counsel Hook. Um, I am curious if we have any, um, knowledge that they're gonna have some type of a clause for government buildings. Um, cause I know that, like, they're still gonna require them in schools. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna get stuck in some loophole, um, that maybe as a council, we should think ahead, unless you guys know that that's not gonna happen.
Um, so we were on a League of Oregon Cities call, I think it was just this last week, and they actually were very clear that government is not exempt from any of this. We are treated just like any other business and have to follow the, the guidelines.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, comments on this? Okay, um, so are we, are we kind of okay with this stuff now? These, uh, two or three, at least three exceptions, uh, points to clear up and, um, other thoughts on how to play by the rules, but, uh, at least try to play. And open meetings, uh, again, I would really like this. This is, I don't think I'm the only one that thinks these Zoom meetings have not been, um, they're not the happiest time in my life, that's for sure. Um, I miss the interactions with people. So let's go, if we're done with that, let's go the American Rescue Plan Act.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Yo?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
And just to be sure I captured that, I think it's two items. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the, with the following amendments, uh, in section two, taking out 50 people or the reference to 50 people and instead put as current state COVID-19 guidance allows for occupancy.
Okay.
And then for section six, item two, take out abstain from attending in person. And I believe those were the only two. So that's my motion is to approve with those two amendments.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. There were, I thought there were two of those abstaining from meeting, uh, pieces in there that Counsel Ort identified. I thought there were two.
There is, there's, um, on six, but then the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. I thought there were two pieces there where that phrase was used.
So.
So I can, I can, uh, reset, not rescind, but, um, yeah, I'll rescind my motion and make another motion then.
Okay.
So the first, the, the motion is to accept as amended with the 50 people in section two to, as current state code COVID-19 guidance allows for occupancy and any reference to abstaining from, uh, attending if you've submitted in, uh, uh, public comment over email or whatever the, the references.
Writing.
All right.
Thank you.
Fine, Chris. Uh, is there a second, please, on that motion?
Yes, second.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Uh, under discussion. And the motion is welcome. Uh, it's a discussion item, but that's fine. That clarifies our, our concerns and puts it in a, a motion form. So any discussion? Let's go to a vote then. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please? Well, that is a, uh, decision item. I was reading the wrong thing. Alyssa?
Let's, let's try. It, it popped up on the bottom, like your microphone's not working. I'm like, um, so, okay. Um, let's do that. All right. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
And Counselor Ort?
No.
You say no?
I said no.
Okay. I just wanna make sure. All right. Motion passes four to one.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, now let's go on a discussion item to the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, um, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, let me get the slideshow started for him real quickly here. Okay. Come on. There we go. One more thing.
Musical chairs here. Mr. Mayor, council members, um, I really do wanna treat this, uh, sort of like a, um, a work session here. So I've done basically a summary of my staff report. Uh, wanna have just an open conversation and dialogue on where things stand and, and where we're at. So just kind of a brief overview for everybody. On March 11th, 2021, the president signed into law the American Rescue Act Plan, uh, ARPA, I think is the, uh, acronym that they're using for this. It is a $1.9 trillion recovery plan with direct funding going to local communities, cities, governments. This is one change from the staff report. Initially, we've been told that the money, we should receive our money sometime in June or July of this year. As of Friday, we had been notified that the timeframe has changed and will be July or potentially August of 2021 before we receive our funds. So according to League of Oregon Cities, state is expected to receive $1,523,507. Um, the money is allocated directly from the federal government to the state. The state then has 30 days to transfer that money to the city. So at this point, from what I'm understanding is the state hasn't received the money yet. So that's why we're still waiting to receive. The allocations are split into two, so we get a half payment each time. So the first allocation, when it comes in 2021, will be for the amount of $761,753.50. And then exactly one year later, we're supposed to receive the second payment. So this is coming from the federal government. The federal government, uh, has the Treasury Department in your packet is the easy to read and not boring at all, uh, 39-page guidelines for the interim final rule, which is the regulations requirements for the money. If you notice in there that there is a comment period that runs through July 16th of 2021. So entities and, and interested parties have the right to comment on the interim final rule. After the comment period, the federal government will release their final rule shortly thereafter. So, um, basically that's the guidelines that are in place right now, waiting for more public feedback and feedback to determine what the actual limitations or requirements or how the city can or cannot utilize those funds that are being sent to us through, through this fund. I don't plan on reading all of these, but these are the basic, um, guidelines so far in place of what the money can be used for. So these are the current approved uses. Um, we'll talk more about these as we get along, but right now, this is what is in place saying this is what the city can use this money for, or to allocate these monies, um, that we're receiving. So what they're saying at this point is that with any categories that we just discussed, there is a broad flexibility to decide how to best use this funding to meet the needs of our community, of our city. Um, Congress has specifically deemed two specific uses as ineligible. The funds may not be used for or deposited in any pension funds and they can't use to be directly or indirectly, and I put that in quotes, cause that's directly from them, to reduce taxes. And they can't use to be directly or indirectly, and I put that in quotes because that's directly from them, to reduce taxes. So while we writing the staff report, we had this lovely message from the National League of Cities. The National League of Cities is part of the League of Cities, the Oregon League, LOC, the League of Oregon Cities for Oregon. National League of Cities is the parent organization. They're the ones that worked with Congress to get this funding. And we were notified of concerns that the federal government may be clawing back the ARPA funds to pay for proposed infrastructure package. So they'd asked for the city to reach out to our federal representatives and ask them to not do this. I'm sharing this as just a caution on a couple of things. One, we really need a way to receive the money. That's the first thing. And with any sort of funding from state or federal government, the first thing you need to do is to not get too excited until we actually get the money. And the second may be to follow what is happening with this clawback. The ARPA funds were controversial in some ways, and I think that's why this issue of the clawback of basically monies of that 1.5 that we've been talking about are being allocated, may be clawed back from the federal government for infrastructure. The other thing I just want to kind of briefly mention as well is we have received that 1.5 million that I've talked about. From the LOC is what our expected allocations are. There are some rumors and the LOC has been talking about this of cities not receiving the amount of funds that they had initially thought they were going to receive. So while I say that's the money we're anticipating, that's the allocation that we receive from the LOC is what our expectations should be. That could very much change. So I don't want anyone in the council or anyone in the community to think that that's set in stone. So it goes back to my comment of we will wait and see when we get the money, how much we get. And then also look for that final rule to come into place, which should help us provide guidance on how we can or cannot allocate this money. So this is kind of what I just said right here. City receives its first installment, releases the final rule. Staff will be back with ideas, suggestions on how to utilize the funds. So what we plan on doing is coming back with suggestions and working with a budget adjustment. And then talking about what would be the right way to allocate this money. One thing that is important to note is we have until 2024 to expend the funds, so we're not in any hurry. There's any need necessarily to spend the money quickly. So that's kind of what we're waiting for the next steps. We're kind of patiently waiting for that July 16th deadline, the final rule, patiently waiting for the money to come. And then, and then kind of go from, from there. So with that, I went kind of fast through that, but I want to take any questions or have any discussions you want to have now about this money and where it stands and kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you Keith. Questions? Could be lots of them. This is kind of a windfall, but it's, I won't count your chickens until they're hatched, I guess, is the old adage.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Keith, when you're, would it be helpful to, you said contact our what is it, the federal, it's coming from the federal, right?
Yeah.
So would it be helpful to contact our Congress member in the state?
We plan on reaching out just to do a quick letter of support, just to keep that money in place and to not do clawbacks. As much as anything, it's just trying to make sure with certainty what we can and can't do, right? So we're happy to do that just as a staff, as a general thing, if the council would like to also provide a letter. Of course, we could, we could craft a letter and just have the council support, just stating that we would like for the monies to stay with the city. And I think one of the concerns from the federal government, this is, I'm kind of quoting the LOC on this one, is there was a lot of concerns that we as a city couldn't spend our money wisely. So, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, we could put in there that we will do a good process and we can follow the rules and we could utilize this money for the good of our community. So. But that's, that's kind of where things stand right now. But happy from the staff point to do that, or if the council would like to, to provide a letter, happy to do that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Is somebody else there?
Counselor Hook.
Go ahead.
Um, I would, I'm just one person on the council clearly, but I would really like to be involved in signing on to a letter in support of what you and the staff are doing. I'm not sure if other counselors feel that way, but I would like.
Mr. Mayor, I would too. I was thinking of like emailing myself or like we could all, you know, but we can also do a letter. I'm okay with that too. So. Either way.
Yes. Yeah, we'd be happy to craft a letter and just, you know, have anybody that'd like to sign on, sign on for sure.
Okay, good. Is there any other than the obvious given reasons why the feds would want to clawback some of this money? Knowing that that infrastructure package is kind of on shaky grounds in Congress? Is that part of it?
Um, yeah, I, you know, I really haven't dove too deeply into this, this subject matter, Mr. Mayor, honestly, at this point, to see kind of what's driving that. You know, I think my caution always is not to get too concerned about rumors or conjecture until we get further along. But obviously with the NLC sending something out, there is some level of concern that that could be, that could be the reason why. And we didn't really hear much about that on Friday from the LOC. They talked about it briefly, but I hope to get more information on that as well. But I think that's, that's really what the bargaining that goes on in the federal government, you know, that's happening right now is is saying, well, here's one way to pay for that infrastructure that we're being talked about. And we've talked about that, that plan for the infrastructure, you know, from the staff point of view in terms of the roundabout design for Gulf Wilco and Shaft. And, and one of the things the LOC has been talking about and other trainings and other events that I've been on, and I think Lance has been on as well, have been talking about having shovel ready plans. So I was on a call last week or week and a half ago where that was in the conversation, where cities really need to be moving for infrastructure projects to make them shovel ready. Because last year there was an infrastructure plan, there weren't shovel ready projects, so there was just a lot of paving that happened and they want to avoid paving, they want more of that. So there is some encouraging signs, you know, that, you know, we talked about that with the council, we talked about the reasons why we thought moving forward even during COVID was, you know, was worthy of that Gulf Wilco Shaft Road. And now we're off infrastructure, not ARPA, but I think this is kind of a tangent to what we've been talking about. So I think there's optimism there that, you know, at least we would have a project that would, if an infrastructure package could pass, would be something that would be viable and something we could present for sure.
Okay, thank you Keith. Other questions? Questions and dots? So let's, let's hold our breath and wait for some concrete answers or wait for the check, I guess.
Yeah, and we'll keep, we'll keep the council up to date as we hear more information and, and once we get the money, when we get the money, if we get the money, when we get that, and then waiting for that final rule. We'll be back and have another conversation just about that. Staff, we've already had these discussions to talk about ideas of coming forward with just a list of suggestions too. So definitely plan on coming back and having more conversations on what would be the best use for this money.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Keith on this one? Okay, let's, let's go to communications from city staff. Anything Keith?
Yeah, yeah, one thing I do want to touch on really briefly tonight, and we posted something on social media, and I might have Lance hop on here as well because we're, we're hearing a lot about this. Oregon is, is in a drought type situation right now. We had the lowest rainfall in April. The soil levels are incredibly dry. One of the things that we're hearing, one of the things that we're trying to advocate for and something we're going to continue to promote is wildfire safety. The library director caught a little fire out here where somebody had thrown a cigarette onto, onto the bark dust. So this is really going to be something we dealt with last year in Beechey Creek. We want to be cautious. We want people to start thinking in terms of water shortages, drought type conditions, but also wildfire safety. Lance, I see you hop on. I know you and I've had this conversation, so I put you on the spot a little bit here, but you want to kind of share what some of the things you've been hearing as well on this?
Well, if I did, I'd just be parroting what you just said. I think that you summed up what we heard last week on the LOC meeting from the Oregon Water Resources Department, and that's, that pretty much mimics what the Corps of Engineers has been telling folks as well. We're in a water shortage as well as a drought. So those are two storms coming to a head and we're going to have to deal with them this summer. So we're already planning for ways that we may have to conserve water. And we're going to reach out to the public on a regular basis to help them educate them on how to make their, their homes and their yards fire protective and prevent, hopefully prevent any kind of fires in the city and state. We did have a fire last week up on First Avenue on Cathy. I'm not sure exactly what started that fire. But there was already a fire in town. And the last thing we need is you know, another month of no rain, dryer, and having a fire start in town and consume a block or two. That's, it's not something we need. So we will continue with our educational services and keep you guys informed.
Yeah, touching on that, I mean, one of the secondary things too is the snowpack levels in the Cascades. Because we've had drier, warmer weather, the snowpack levels have gone down. So we talked about the dry conditions and the drought like conditions. I mean, one of the other concerns is lower water in Detroit and then ultimately to our water plant. Also warmer, warmer temperatures with lower water levels, meaning the algae bloom situation again becomes a major concern that we have as well. So when we talk about operations of our plant, we do know those sand filter beds are really good with the algae blooms. But with low levels of water, there's other issues like turbidity and issues like that. So that can have an impact on our ability to create water. So we're just, we're having this conversation early, wanted to have it now, wanted to put it in front of the council. Wanted to talk about how we're going to continue to promote and advocate for this. And just to be ready for some of the outcomes of what we're seeing as an historically dry and potentially worsening situation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can or any discussions the council has on that.
All right, thank you Keith. Anything else from the, from the staff?
I think, I think that's the main thing we want to talk about, Mr. Mayor.
Communications from mayor and council. One thing I'd like to offer is that we're meeting with county commissioners tomorrow at 7:30 at the Covered Bridge Cafe for a regular monthly meeting, second Tuesday of the month. One of the topics we're going to explore is this continued road and street maintenance program with, with the county. I hear things on the street down at the coffee shop about what kind of money would it take? What kind of a package? How much money would it take to do a comprehensive street maintenance or renewal rebuilding program? And the numbers get kicked around, 10 million, 20 million. You know, incredible numbers. What could we, what could we sell to the community? As, as far as a comprehensive program to get a lot of streets fixed, a lot of engineering done. It's maybe beyond our means. But something to at least talk about and then that cooperative effort with them. And so that's, that's one of the topics that is going to get kicked around tomorrow morning. And folks are welcome to come sit and contribute or sit and listen and talk to these county officials. And generally, at least two of them show up, sometimes all three. So that's what I've got to offer.
Mr. Mayor, what time?
7:30.
7:30.
In the morning. Yep, yep. And you've been to those and they're pretty productive. Yeah, yeah, sometimes they really are.
I just didn't know if you had said what time, so I wanted to make sure people knew.
Yep, 7:30. Hope to see somebody else there. Keith and I generally go. And but there's people from Jefferson. Sometimes person from Mill City. One of the commissioners has at least a summer place at Detroit, so he's usually there. And we get to talk about a lot of county issues. So that's what I've got this evening. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yeah.
Like a quick update from staff where we are at on forming the Public Arts Commission. And then I have a subsequent question afterwards.
That's a good one.
Oh, let me get my camera started. So currently we've received the one application which the council had approved, which was Judy Mahoney, Moni, sorry.
Thought we'd done two. Haven't we done two?
No, no, only one.
Judy?
Okay, all right. So with that, I'd like to motion that we bring forward this sidewalk art project that those members from RDS were talking to us about earlier tonight for a council decision at our next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, motion of a second to bring forth that pro, that art, street art program that RDS is sponsoring for a decision next meeting. So be an active agenda item. Counselor Patty, is that correct?
You got it.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Counselor Patty, would you entertain, I was thinking about this as well, but either, two, two things, either setting up a work session first and having Judy join us. And that way she can be part of the conversation and kind of collaborate with her together because she's the only member on the Arts Commission. Or, I mean, and/or have her come to invite her to the council meeting. And then have her be part of that conversation. But I was thinking if we did it in the two separate spaces. That could kind of satisfy our commission piece of it, so we could kind of hash out any questions or details we might need to. What do you think of that?
I just have a quick question for Counselor or Mr. Mayor. This is Counselor Patty. Yeah, so just so I understand this right. Are you seeing her role as collaborating in like a work session environment or presenting? Like, can you explain a little bit what you see her role in that atmosphere as?
Sure, just as a participant, because generally she would be participating with the rest of the Arts Commission. But we don't, we don't have that. But I think that her voice, she wants to be part of that conversation. And so her voice as a community member on that commission is important. And so that's why I was thinking of doing the work session first.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I'd like to amend my motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to also.
Second, I'm sorry, do you have to get a second from Counselor Mullen to add it?
I think Counselor Mullen has to agree.
Yeah. I have to make the amendment first. That's okay. Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I'd like to move to amend my prior motion to add Judy Mahoney as part of a work session for that first hearing on the sidewalk art project.
Active participant?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second on a amendment to the motion to involve Judy Mahoney as an active member in a work session, the discussion of this RDS Community Arts Program. So let's see, discussion on the amendment, please. See, so we need to approve the amendment and then the motion. So Alyssa, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Art?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero on the amendment.
So the amendment is passed and that adds Judy Mahoney to as an active participant in a discussion of this RDS street art program. So the main motion, what is, can you read that to me again?
Okay.
As amended, go ahead.
See if I can read my notes here. So the motion was to bring forward the RDS Street Art Program to council at their next meeting for decision with the amendment of scheduling a work session prior to that meeting and including Judy Moni as a participant in the discussion.
All right, thank you.
Did I get it?
Very nice, very nice.
All right.
Any discussion on, on that main motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just as a clarification, so when we bring this forward, the first time it'll be just a work session, we won't make a it won't be an action item that time. Is that correct?
As I understand it, yes.
And then we'll bring it back again. Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I'm on the same page with everybody. Just want to make sure I'm on the same page with everybody.
Well, work session first, uh. Knock out the details, questions, then come back to the council meeting with an action item. Uh, to either go ahead with this program or, or whatever we need to do. From what I'm understanding, uh, other discussion, questions? Let's go to a, let's go to a decision on that then. Auto motion to, um. Schedule a, an action item at the next council meeting to, uh, do something with this RDS street art program. Uh, go ahead, full of counsel, would you please, Alyssa?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Art?
Yes.
And Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Good. Uh. Is that all the business we have this evening? Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Uh, I just, I did have a question. So the way that our, this is for all of you, uh, so the way that our current. Meeting rules are is that if the council, if someone on the council wants to bring forward. Um. An item like today, like, uh, Counselor Patty did, then we have to wait until we have a meeting in order to do that. Um. Is, I don't know how other cities do it, but. Is there a way to like, can we talk about changing our? Um. Our rules? To like make that process go a little bit faster or having the option of adding it to, as a discussion item, as new business. To that meeting. I just feel like sometimes like things are more timely, but then we have to wait sometimes three weeks even to even discuss whether or not we're going to put it on. A meeting. Makes sense.
Well, it does. I'd like to, I like to think that, uh, that time lapse, uh. Is a chance for everybody to think about an issue. If we start throwing action items in on the agenda, just out of the blue. Um. Let's see if we can, uh, I, I want to attract, uh, this flying pig circus. Uh, to town next week and I need a vote on it. Uh, people get ambushed by this stuff sometimes, maybe not necessarily, but it just happens.
Okay, I don't, I don't necessarily want that to happen. That's not, you know, and that, that's something that certainly think about, so.
Bringing up items, uh, that, um. Aren't, perhaps, but need discussing and, and maybe need some action, but, uh, given a little time to, uh, to let folks think about it and, um. Not feel forced, I guess, is the best way to say it. But, yeah. And timely, timely things are important. You bet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this is Counselor Hook. I, I just wanted to thank you for bringing up that, um, possible unintended consequence. Um, I really appreciate, uh, Counselor Art, um, expressing what she did because I, I agree that sometimes things just seem to take a really long time to get through. Um, but I feel like that consequence, um, could be really detrimental, not just for this council, but for future councils.
Okay, I do have something else then. Um, we had talked about, uh. Doing more work sessions and sometimes I just feel like when we only get to talk about things in a, in this formal meeting session that it's harder to. Like have a true conversation about it or hash things out. Um. So I don't know how we do that. If it's just like a case by case basis that we decide that we want to do a work session on something. Um. But I think that it can be important to do that sometimes and we don't always have that ability. To have discussions.
Well, not on this format, no, because you've got an outside audience listening and, uh. People will hold back what they, what they truly think about something, uh, uh, because it's, uh. Maybe. I don't know, just isn't, uh, doesn't sound good in, in a big public audience. Among a small group. Things can be said that, uh, maybe it's called protected speech. I don't know. But we don't all let our hair down in, in these, uh, these Zoom meetings. We've got an audience out there. And, uh. Things sort of get hashed out, but then they don't. So. Yeah, I'd like to open work sessions. Or closed work sessions or just impersonal, in-person work sessions. Um, work a lot better for me, I believe. That's just one. Anyway. Anyone else? It's a fair, it's a fair point, Counselor. Is there anything else this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I guess I just did, this is Counselor Hook. I, I guess I just didn't want to be silent and not, um, say that I agree with Counselor Art, but, um, I, I would like to see. More work sessions and I know that we talked about having more of those and, um, I appreciate, uh, her. I can't remember if it was Counselor Patty or Counselor Art that brought up having a work session. I think it's Counselor Art, sorry. Um, but I just wanted to. At least make that known that I, I agree that we should have more because it is difficult to hash it all out in a council meeting.
Okay, so then a follow-up question to that is I don't necessarily think that all of our items need or require that. Um. And maybe this is a question for, uh, Keith and Alyssa, but if something. Is that something that the council has to agree on that we want to do a, a work session on or? How do we go about facilitating that?
Just, I'm sorry, just the idea of calling work sessions, Counselor?
Um, so say if something is. I don't know, it's kind of, it's kind of hard because sometimes like we, a lot of times we don't know what's coming up on the. Uh. On the agenda until the week before. So then if we, if it's something that we feel like might need a, a work session, then we can't say that until the council meeting. So that's kind of one of the ideas that I had was like, not the idea that I had, but that was one of the things that kind of brought that up. It's like, okay, well, we can't even. Talk about having a work session on an item until we even come to the council meeting and by that time we're already starting on the agenda.
Well, here's a, here's a.
That's another, so that's another, um, issue. I guess it's different than the one I said, but that's another example.
It's a workable possibility. Uh, the problem is it takes time, uh, is to go to work sessions on the odd Mondays. When we don't have council meetings, like next Monday, have a work session, maybe limit it to an hour. And just hash out these future items if, if they're known. That means two more meetings a month. Uh, two more Mondays away from family or at least distracted from family. And, uh, it's, you know, time is, time is valuable and I don't know whether the group would sit still for it, but it's one possibility. Just a suggestion.
Mr. Mayor?
Expect anyone to thank me for that, but you never know once in a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, this is Counselor Hook and I, um, I, I feel like I'm a fan of the, uh, tacking it before the meeting, um, that's already scheduled. If we're going to do something like that, put a, a work session on, um. Even if it's just a thirty minute work session on something, uh, just to get those extra questions and details and ideas out. Um, before the, the actual meeting where then we're voting. But that's just my thoughts and they're not fully complete because I am just now thinking about this.
Okay, so a meeting maybe at six o'clock. Uh, or six thirty, a half an hour before council meetings of, uh, of questions that have come up and, and, uh. Need to be thought about at least. Something like that. I didn't think the more meetings a month was going to go over very well.
I like that idea, Counselor Hook. I don't, I, but I, I don't know, I hesitate because I don't think we always need them. So I don't know. This is just, I mean, I'm just, this is a work session right now because I'm just kind of putting the deal, ideas out there, but. Um, I do, I do like, uh, the option. Because right now we don't even have a formal option and Alyssa came on, but then she left, so.
I'm here still. Um, I'll just chime in and say that we definitely as a staff, when we're looking at future agenda items. It is something that we think about and, you know, if it is a big enough topic, it's not all topics like you mentioned need a work session, right? And so we do try to pay attention and if there's something that's going to be maybe a little bit bigger and more in-depth discussion for sure. And, um, it's, it's definitely something I think that we can, uh, discuss further, whether it's on those off Mondays or like Counselor Hook suggested. Um, doing things prior to our regular meetings.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to just kind of weigh in here with this. I'm not opposed to additional work sessions to better understand some of the action items on our agenda during regular session meetings. I would like to see that. However, I am kind of hesitant to make a standing meeting. As I know it's a pretty significant financial commitment from the city to advertise work sessions in advance and also coordinate staff's time. So I'm hesitant to schedule meetings that may not have any use because of the financial piece of this. However, I do see the value in having those conversations that are enriched with more facts for us as council to be able to have this work session environment. So I s. I see, uh, the need for it. I just would like to have staff maybe take a look at, uh, better identifying what would be a good item for a work session versus regular session.
Okay, all right. I like that.
I like that too.
Other thoughts and questions, anything?
Mr. Mayor? This is Counselor Hook. Um, I really like that idea as well. I agree with Counselor Patty and I know it might seem like we're, uh. Expecting staff to read minds a little bit, but, um, also I think it goes to show the trust that we have in the staff to know. Kind of what, what they think that we're going to want to talk more about. Um, I have full faith that you guys. Know what we're passionate about and what the community is passionate about and, um. Uh, you guys have done a great job this whole time in general. And so, um. COVID has just kind of slowed things down and I think now we're starting to get back on, on track of getting to the things that we wanted to do a long time ago, a year ago.
Made our lives more difficult, that's for sure. Okay, is there anything else this evening? A one and a two and a three and a four and a five. Let's call it a night then. Thank you all. Take care. Meetings adjourned. We'll do this again.